The City Council for the City of Brookshire, Texas will hold a regular session, city council meeting on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven P. M. in City Hall to consider the following. Can we have prayer? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Richards.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Green. Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Stamps.
Present.
Alderman McDate.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Public comments per Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code five five one zero zero seven, the city council may not discuss or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each member of the public wishing to speak must sign in before the meeting, which is limited to three minutes. And I have Mister Reggie Brown. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, I'm here to, to ask y'all, can y'all please bring back the fire department? Because this town is starting to grow, and I know that the E S D will not be able to handle the call volume, and I know that they need help. So Brookshire needs a fire department, and it's sad that we don't have one, because I know, growing up in Brookshire, we always had a fire department. And then like, uh, I know when I graduated out of high school, I went, when Joe Gills was here, I, you know, I joined it when Joe Gills was here, and then Joey Vaughn, then Mister Stamps here, we, we all grew up helping out this city. And, uh, it would be nice if the city would just bring back the fire department, because like, if y'all need trucks or whatever, I can get on the website and I can find y'all some tr- trucks, because then, believe me, I'm on websites every day looking for them. So I'm just asking y'all if y'all can, you know, bring back the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Robert Johnson.
Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
My reason here tonight is to be speaking of, uh, latest information about, uh, transaction going on on Twelfth Street for a possibility, uh, warehouse manufacturer and roadway repayment. So I'm here to get a full outline on what the capability of their situation and what the outcome of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Ruth Rodriguez.
Good evening, I'm here because I'm a registered voter, and because I'm a constituent of the City of Brookshire, and because I believe in the U. S. Constitution, one thousand percent. Um, I would like to, in the spirit of open government, ask for my public information requests that have not been fulfilled, not just under this administration, but I understand how, in my experience, there's a tendency to blame and point fingers to the previous and what they didn't do and what they did, did do. I just, um, leader to leader, I'm a leader in my life, do something that's within the open government and fulfill my public information request. The other thing I would like to have is an incident report form. This is so when someone falls or has any kind of incident on city property, we can report it, and I'd like for y'all to, Mayor, please take some kind of executive action and demand that that form appear. It appeared two years ago, so I'm sure it's still around. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, discussion of possible acting to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
She has, she has a question.
Where is it at here? Oh, yes, um, item number fourteen. I know that Alderman Stamps directed the city attorney to draft a letter to give to Texas Pride. I was just trying to see was, is that in progress?
Yes.
For the city East Mid?
But it really doesn't have anything to do with minutes. I mean, yes, that is in progress.
Okay, all right. All righty, that's it.
Is that it? Miss Taylor, you have your motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
Item number six.
October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Next, we have a presentation from Bryant Stacy Group, potential development on Twelfth Street.
Good evening, Mayor Council, residents in attendance. Wanted to bring this to you all as a presentation. I know, um, a couple of meetings back, we talked about Twelfth Street development and, um, inquiring if L J A was gonna move forward with the, um, design and cost estimate, and that was, um, removed. Um, wanted to bring it back, just to kind of give you an idea after speaking to one of the council members and identifying, um, a little bit more information that with this project, there was no, um, private property, residential property from individuals that are there in place that were gonna ask for right of way. It was the particular private development, um, that was going to be asked for their right of way for a widening of the street. But I do have here Mister Will, Will Stacy and, uh, Jack Smith from Bryant Stacy Group to give you a little more update on what they are attempting to do there on Twelfth Street. Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mister Batista.
Good evening.
Council members, thanks for carving out a few minutes' time to let us show you what we have planned currently for Twelfth Street, um, and for taking a look at it and considering it, uh, to see if it's something that may move forward to the next steps. So currently, we have, uh, an approximately thirteen acre tract of land under contract along Twelfth Street, um, and what we intend to develop there is what you see here, which is an office warehouse project. It will be very similar to what you have, uh, at Woods Road right now at Empire West. It'll be Class A construction, concrete tilt wall, um, and this is, uh, we tweaked it a little bit, this is a pretty accurate rendering of what it would ultimately look like. Um, in order to do that, Twelfth Street would have to be a commercially viable road, and currently, it's just not that. Um, there's another, there you go, that's a site plan of what we have, of what we intend to develop, which is approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot office warehouse, um, on, there you go, thank you very much. On the next slide there, this is the, there's gonna have to be additional right of way, we understand from talking with the city, that, uh, would need to be acquired in order to make that happen. Um, the site that, that we have under contract is really, I'm gonna step over here to the, this site. And so, we're very willing to give the necessary right of way that would be needed for that portion of the expansion of the road. On the north side of the street, um, we've spoken with the representatives of the owner of that tract and haven't talked to the owner directly, apparently they're out of town, out of the country, I think, haven't been able to talk to them, but with their representatives, um, who have said that they are also very willing to donate the right of way that's needed. Um, the one piece that's a question mark would be the very corner piece, haven't made contact with those folks yet, um, about their willingness to, to donate right of way. So between the tract that we have under contract currently and the owner on the north side of Twelfth Street, the bulk of the right of way that at least gets us to our project, we can relatively confidently say is gonna be there for the city in order to make the expansion if we choose to move forward. Um, the next slide will show the current street situation, and so, as you can see, that just doesn't really work for any kind of commercial business that may be located there. So we're asking the city to consider expanding the street so that businesses might be able to operate, not just us, but others that may operate and be developed and built along Twelfth Street. Um, one of the things that we've included, uh, toward the back was just a tax calculation of the ad valorem taxes that the building would bring. This does not include inventory taxes. This is just current tax rates in the city on the value of this building. It's valued similarly to what Empire West buildings are valued at, that's what we've used, we looked at your tax rolls. So this building, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year of taxable value on the ground, that's before there's any inventory tax that comes along with it, um, which, when we've done our math of what it would cost to build a street, what it would cost, um, the city if they choose to move forward, within, there again, without inventory taxes, within a year and a half of taxes from this one building, the street gets paid for. So that's our request that it be considered, certainly here for any questions, if you have any, if you have some, now I'm happy to do my best to answer them, if you have any, certainly after the fact, if you want to take this information and consider it, we're available to come back to the city and meet with any council members that may want to do that by phone, in person, however you want to do it, um, but it's our request that the city continue to explore that and engage L J A to look at what that design may look like.
I do have a question, have you spoke with any residents that live on that street?
No, ma'am, we haven't.
That would be my only concern, is the residents that live there, I mean, everything looks good, but at the end of the day, we do have to consider our residents that's living there and has been living there as well, um.
Sure.
Yes.
And the bulk of the right of way falls on the south side of the street where, you know, there's, there's very little disruption to any structures, homes, businesses that would be there.
With this company, um.
And normally, with, normally with projects like this, you would normally have like a, a public hearing or something of that nature, that's when the, uh, naped up, public would have the opportunity to be able to speak their voice as far as.
Sure. Any questions for, for me while I'm here?
I'm a resident of Brookshire, run by my, more generations here, so I appreciate everything you're saying and doing, um, one of the things I heard you say was that, that Twelfth Street just doesn't cut it, you know, I, I want you to please understand how much this town means to so many of us, and that street is home to so many people already and has been, so it is cutting. If you need it for something else, then I just hope you respect all the years and families that have lived there now and have lived there.
Sure. We, we absolutely do, and I appreciate that it works well for you now. My comments were only for commercial purposes, it, it doesn't work for that, but I appreciate that absolutely for you it works as it is. Yes, ma'am.
Doctor Batista, oh, I'm sorry, we, give, one second.
Yes, sir, uh, I'm, uh, I live across the street of that property, and my concern is the, the traffic flow and, uh, the safety of the people that have been living down that street for years.
Right.
And for years have been a peaceful, quiet, quiet, peaceful street, but with that company coming in, my issue is that, uh, that will be a problem that we have to deal with with all the traffic coming in, how many doors do you have in that building for the people that's already on the street having access in and out?
Sure. So the building would be built on a speculative basis, so I, I can't say exactly who the tenant might be that would operate in that building. Certainly, there would be some additional traffic on the street, there's no doubt about it, but with an improved street, that would greatly help with traffic flow as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Doctor Batista, you have anything you'd like to add?
I just want to mention that we were just having initial conversations with this, with this group, and, um, initially, with the, the conversation was, um, them developing and paying for the street and then potentially having a reimbursement, so that was how the initial conversation started out, so I just wanted to share that, um, but, um, interested in hearing how we want to move forward with this one.
Okay, thank y'all.
Any other questions?
Oh, that's it. Next item is consulting reports, code enforcement report. Is there any discussion on the code enforcement report?
Nothing for me.
Miss Taylor? All right, uh, Grant Works Report. Good evening.
All right, good evening, hello. Um, as of today, they have completed the patchwork for the nine roads for Grant Works Arpa. Um, we have completed our field work and are now calculating everything for as built to make sure of what square yardage went out there, and then we will finalize the pay application and numbers for y'all to review at the next meeting.
Okay, so, well, roadworks complete, you all are out there doing the measurements to make sure that, before we pay the contractor, that we got what we, got what we're paying for, correct? Okay. Miss, uh, Glover, you have anything to add?
Um, yes, uh, the mid mod, um, for the mid mod, we are going to have to do an amendment because they are now extending, um, linear footage on, uh, First Street and Fourth Street. So it first started at just, uh, stall neck and then a linear feet of maybe twenty-four footage, which is now extended to twenty-nine, so they have to do an amendment because it wasn't done, um, the extra linear was not in the original contract. So once they get started with that amendment and approved by the General Land Office, we'll move forward with the mid mod, proceeding to the bid bot, uh, process.
And just for information, the mid mod project is a flood drainage project that has three roads, uh, digging out ditches and replacing culverts as needed, and so.
I have one more thing, and we're also removing, uh, stall neck off the project, so that's another thing we have to be putting in with the amendments, so that's the procedure for mid mod.
All right, so, uh, L J A engineering and permit reports.
All right, permit reports, received six new plan reviews, held nine pre-development meetings, and responded to twenty-seven inquiries on permitting and developing. Um, we are also working on road repairs, phase two, to essentially fill in the gaps for the nine roads that we did, um, so while we were out there getting the quantities of what was done, we're also getting the quantities of what needs to be filled in, so those are whole roads. Um, we are going to bring that to the next meeting for everybody's approval, um, and then we are also working on the analysis and costs for repairing the culverts at Briar Brook, and then also the analysis and costs at Crystal Lakes, and hope to bring those to December's meeting.
All right.
Any other questions? Nothing for me.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Department here reports, Public Works.
Good evening again, you have the report in front of you, entertain any questions if you have them, if not, I do have a two and a half minute quick video, I think from City Engineer you heard on behalf of those nine roads, um, if people can't get to those roads, we want to show them here tonight just to show, um, the progress what was done, and I think you also heard from City Engineer that what they're trying to do is, um, get another R F Q out there that'll help us fill those roads in and they'll be full roads and not patched roads.
I do want to commend you, Public Works is doing a very good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
A lot of progress is being made.
On behalf of the entire team, we appreciate it.
The Depot Street, see, you can see here that it only did half of the street, but it was the entire length of the street, so next portion, trying to be up there. Move along here, uh, the next question going to Robin Street, uh, three major patches that were done here and large portions of it, and we have net left is still two or three more patches ended on the full street. Moving on to Second Street, same thing here, whoever lives down this road got a full road all the way to your left to be here, and they left out there, and so this, this was really nice throughout, I mean, and this is Second Street, you move onto Third Street, a couple of patches there within those streets as well from Purdy to, Purdy to Waller, there are Second and Third, they're all the same. You all seen that there, uh, this is Banes itself, they did do a little patch here, they dug a little patch, so we have ninety and, uh, Banes there, it looks great. Lot of business on Fifth Street, the roads are a little bumpy there, but basically, uh, been repairing based just a few overlay there, you see all the police department, Fifth Street, Fifth Street got some improvements all the way down, not all the way down, but a little past that, but they're kind of, uh, near all the businesses that were there, they tried to make as much improvement based on the linear, um, square footage that they were, as in contract. Moving on to Eleventh Street, did a lot of, live on Eleventh Street as well, you can see Eleventh and Fourteenth in the home there. More on Eleventh Street there, different type of patchwork they did, again, we're trying to bring back some, do those other, other sides of the roads to ensure that we have a full road, so this is coming this week. And then Thirteenth Street, last street there, two patches, two big patches all the way from three fifty-nine, just to just past the church there.
Good job.
And as I mentioned, um, the next step is to make those four roads, the patch roads, four roads, and I think we are, what, a couple of weeks, three weeks before the bid package go out? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Good job. Oh. We can't, we can't, I'm sorry, we can't, excuse, excuse me, hold on, hold on, sir. We can't, that, that was reserved for public comments, we can't.
End of Twelfth Street, and I was speaking in behalf of that issue, that they did work on Tenth, Eleventh Street, so I didn't understand how or why they skipped over Twelfth and went to Thirteenth Street.
Hold on one second.
For my, uh, portion of that, uh, issue is.
Okay, just, just hold on.
They in control of the, uh, road making, and he's in control of building something on Twelfth Street.
We're not supposed to make comment right now. You can't hear, you got straight out of.
Twelfth Street?
No.
Yeah, we can't make comments right now.
This is not time for citizen comments.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. All right, City Secretary Report.
You have, uh, my report for you, I, um, have a few A R, uh, two, um, resolutions that were executed and signed and sent over, my main focus was making sure the R F Q for the engineers, there's just a question on the website and wrote the paper, which it has been, um, sent paperwork over to Becky at Long County and Pleasant District for Councilwoman McDate to be a board candidate, so that is in place, um, do we ever get the junk D H O ordinance, uh, between the offices?
We're, we're gonna have a discussion about it, there's no need to amend the ordinance.
Okay, and we're still waiting on the interlocal agreement from the Brookshire Municipal Water District to finally get that, that signature between the locals, so I guess attorneys were working on it?
I have not seen, nobody sent me an agree, are they supposed to?
Yeah, so, I, I'll get, I'll see.
That's been here for a while.
Yes.
Like, see if we can get that one done.
And, um, our open records request, just for this past month, we've completed over thirty requests, um, again, I have City Hall, Avenue meetings every Tuesday at eight oh seven, eight A. M. at the mayor or council would like to be a part of those meetings. Any questions?
Any questions, discussion?
Thank you.
All right, Brookshire Police Department Report.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Hello. Okay, for the month of October, we had a total of two hundred and fifty-two calls for service, we had twenty-three calls for other agency assistance, we worked eighteen traffic crashes, we had three hundred and four total traffic contacts, uh, officers completed thirty-four offense reports, we had ten arrests for the month of October, and we attended eleven various community events, uh, I met with Pastor Slater at New Life Beginnings Church, uh, Officer Phillips and myself met with Pastor Beverly at her retail shop, uh, myself, Lieutenant Norsworth, Sergeant Buckloo, and Officer Phillips met with the Royal I S D Police Department and other, uh, I S D staff members to walk through all of the campuses, all of our employees attended the National Night Out Festival that we had, um, several of our officers attended the cancer walk with Ms. Denise, uh, myself and Officer Phillips attended the leadership event here at the Convention Center, uh, several officers, including myself, attended the Bless the Block event that was about two weeks ago on a Saturday, uh, and several of our officers hosted a trunk or treat event at the, uh, at the police department in the parking lot, and three Saturdays in a row, Sergeant Buckloo and Officer Rodriguez assisted with, uh, the bike ride escorts for the Brookwood community. So we've stayed busy.
Nice.
Good job.
On top of that, um, officers are now using door hangers that look like this, um, after hours so that business owners know that we are out in the community and that we are checking their businesses, we're making sure these doors are secured, making sure that their properties are safe, um, so if business owners are watching or listening to our council meetings, they know that if they get one of these orange notices on their door, it's because we're out and we're checking their property, they want, I want them to know that we're out there and we're providing a service for them.
Nice.
Uh, we're also implementing a new program to update all emergency contact information for local businesses, uh, our officers are going out in the community and meeting with owners and managers for businesses and getting emergency contact information in case there is something that occurs at their business in the middle of the night, we are able to get in contact with somebody who can come and secure that business if it's needed. Our department is also in the planning stages of creating a scholarship program for Royal I S D, um, we're going to receive donations from all of our officers at the police department and try and provide at the end of the school year at least two scholarships for two students that are gonna be going to college the next year.
Nice.
I don't have all of the details on that, we're still in the, in the working stages of that. Uh, on top of that, we had one resignation this month, we have two officers in the background process, we have another dispatcher in the background process, and we've conducted four interviews for new employees.
All right.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
I think y'all have a food drive too, right?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir, we do have a food drive. And several of our officers hosted a trunk or treat event at the, at the Police Department in the parking lot. And three Saturdays in a row, Sergeant Buckloo and Officer Rodriguez assisted with the bike ride escorts for the Brookwood community. So we've stayed busy.
Nice.
Um.
Good job.
On top of that, officers are now using door hangers that look like this after hours so that business owners know that we are out in the community and that we are checking their businesses, we're making sure these doors are secured, making sure that their properties are safe. So if business owners are watching or listening to our council meetings, they know that if they get one of these orange notices on their door, it's because we're out and we're checking their property. They want, I want them to know that we're out there and we're providing a service for them.
Nice.
Uh, we're also implementing a new program to update all emergency contact information for local businesses. Our officers are going out in the community and meeting with owners and managers for businesses and getting emergency contact information in case there is something that occurs at their business in the middle of the night, we are able to get in contact with somebody who can come and secure that business if it's needed. Our department is also in the planning stages of creating a scholarship program for Royal ISD. We're going to receive donations from all of our officers at the Police Department and try and provide at the end of the school year at least two scholarships for two students that are gonna be going to college the next year. I don't have all of the details on that, we're still in the, in the working stages of that. On top of that, we had one resignation this month. We have two officers in the background process. We have another dispatcher in the background process. And we've conducted four interviews for new employees.
All right.
You got any questions? Thank you.
I think y'all have a food drive too, right?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. We do have a food drive as well. November first through twenty-first, we're accepting donations in the PD lobby and we're going to be providing food donations for Thanksgiving to several of the residents here around town. So if anybody would like to donate, please come up to the Police Department, you can call up to the Police Department, we can give you any details if you have any questions. And I also forgot, Lieutenant Norsworth applied for a grant for new tourniquets for all of the officers. So we will be receiving twenty new tourniquets with the holster, so officers will have life-saving equipment on their person.
Great job, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Municipal Court's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
So for the municipal court, the report for October, cases imported total were sixty-two. Completed cases eighty-two. Total revenue collected was eleven thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents. The number of people in the docket were forty, the number of people in the show calls docket were twenty-six. Dismissals, compliance dismissals with fee, registration, driver's license, deferred disposition and driving safety course, we had nineteen. Dismissed by prosecution, only two. Dismissed no complaining witnesses, eight. Dismissed other insurance, compliance or plea bargain were two. Dismissed age purge, zero. Warrants issued, we issued seventeen warrants, reported to Omni seventeen and also reported to collections after sixty days, seventeen. So the, the complete report, the total collections for the month of October twenty twenty-five were eleven thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents. A decrease of six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty cents over the previous month of September. The combination of dockets totaled eighty-four cases for the month of October, a decrease from September of nine cases. There were sixty-two filed violations in the month of October, a decrease of eighty-four violations from the month of September. Do you all have any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, financial reports, bills, paid credit card, revenue and expense report. Ms. Lowndes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So for the month of September, this is our last fiscal year, so it's a little hefty report. The first report you'll see is a new report. It has the balance sheets as far as the bank account reporting from previous month to current month. And that's what we're gonna start doing from here forward and then we'll show the differences and then on the second page we'll kind of outline what make up those differences. Then if you keep going forward, you'll see something that looks familiar, the revenue and expense report. This month, we had forty-six K of revenue and then eight hundred K of expenses. Then we also had seventy-seven payments, two hundred K expense on the credit card. We also are including the tax pool and tax star balances as well that you guys have available for you. And, um, sorry, did you want to talk about the financials?
Right, so, um, as she mentioned, the first page is an example of what we will have each, once a month to show where we are financially from month to month and if we made money or lost money for the city. So that's an example. The second page, the expense and revenue report, you'll notice the second column of that report is the year-to-date actual which shows a revenue of ten million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly. And then you'll see a actual expense of eight million, seven fifty-six. And then our total revenue end up being one point nine million. But if you look at the second column, which is the fifteen million, seven seventeen, that is the amount of money that was predicted by previous administration. The revenue, which is about four point nine million dollars short difference. Uh, and so that budget was overstated. And so the actual revenue is ten point seven million in comparison to fifteen million that was predicted from previous administration, just so you all would know in the report. And we verified those numbers with our advert-lore tax, property tax and other revenue that comes in, okay? That's the explanation of that report. Because this is year-end, so we have to give a bit of an explanation of where we are for year-end, the last month of the year. And October first starts the new month of the year.
Then I have a couple of updates for the FY twenty-two audit. The City of Brookshire has provided around ninety percent, ninety-eight percent of the items requested by the auditors. We have successfully completed our grants receivable and accounts payable testing, meaning that the auditors pick random transactions and can you provide the proof for it? What are, what's the check? What's the invoice? Was it going through the right process? And I can say that we passed those tests, we were able to find everything and provide it. Currently, we're on standby waiting on Baker Tilly for further instructions to complete the audit.
So additional comment on the audit. This is probably the, the second most worst thing that we've encountered since we've been here. Uh, and it's the audit. The audits are behind from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and I think we've made that known many times. And so we are trying our best to get it caught up. I'm a little not pleased with the, the performance of Baker Tilly. So hopefully, we can, we can, we can kind of get them working, steer it in the right direction. We, they have fulfilled four things since October. And some of the other things that they're behind on is in July and some of it is for February of last year. And so we really need to get these audits done. We have that downtown revitalization grant that was awarded to the city back in twenty twenty-two. And with those grants, there's a single audit that's required. The single audit cannot be done until the regular audits are caught up. We have about forty-eight thousand dollars that should be reimbursed to the city that's behind since twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, okay? And so it's very important to get these audits caught up and that we have a good auditing firm that's, can dedicate the time to work with us to get this done. And now, is it the General Land Office has given us a, a due date of five thirty-one of twenty twenty-six to get our audits caught up.
Mayor, that's actually the TDA.
TDA, yeah, I'm sorry, TDA. Five thirty-one of twenty twenty-six to get our audits caught up. So we can se- secure that forty-eight thousand dollars. So again, hopefully, we can get Baker Tilly to dedicate more time to getting this done. So we can meet the deadline.
And then on my last note, the Wells Fargo Bank closure is coming towards an end. The city is officially in the process of closing the remaining counts. At the moment, there are only two left. And we're working on closing that, so hopefully by next week, we'll be completely done with Wells Fargo, have all the statements we need and working on one of bank account. You guys have any questions?
No questions for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Item number seven, discussion of possible action to select a contractor to install a generator at the Public Works Annex Disaster Recovery Buildings. So none of those buildings have emergency power right now. And so it's important that we do have that in case we get a hurricane or ice storm or any other natural disaster event. So we have three vendors that came out giving us quotes. We relied on each one of those vendors to tell us what amount of power that we would need. And so before you all, there are three quotes. And if you look at the first one, it is a disaster recovery center. The first vendor thought that we needed a twenty-two KW generator. Second one, a twenty-six KW. And then we have one that's a twenty, forty-eight KW. We decided that it would be good to go with the twenty-six KW generator for that building. And that will be the second quote, select generators. And it will be an amount of sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We would like to get that particular building done first because it is a disaster recovery center. Okay, the second location. The forty twenty-nine Fifth Street, which is the annexed building, received three quotes as well. One for sixteen thousand dollars. Another one, which is a forty-eight KW for thirty-three thousand. The first one was a twenty-two KW for sixteen thousand. The third one. Forty-eight KW. For forty-one thousand. Because that building is gonna be changed over to usable office space, it may require additional AC upgrade, additional panels. We decided to go with, again, select generators with a forty-eight KW, thirty-three thousand, sixteen dollars and twenty-five cent. The last location. It is our Public Works Building. You have before you a quote for, it's a twenty-six KW for eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. You also have a forty-eight KW, thirty-two thousand, seven ninety-nine. And the last quote. It's also a twenty-four KW for nineteen six fifty-four. We decided to go with the forty-eight KW with select generators because we're planning on also extending some additional space on that building. Some additional usable space, so there'll be select generators, thirty-two thousand, seven ninety-nine. Any other discussion concerning generators?
No, sir.
None.
Okay, just need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, select a contractor to install generators at the Public Works Annex and Disaster Recovery Building utilizing select generators as our contractor.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Item number eight, discussion of possible action to amend the per dim amount for employee, employees to travel. So of course, the per dim amount is currently here in place right now. Forty-five dollars for meals. We are requesting that it be raised to sixty-five dollars. It has been forty-five dollars for a very, very long time. Everything else has went up. So we don't want our employees that when they do travel to have to come out of their pocket for anything since they're doing city business. So we're asking for the per dim to be raised to sixty-five dollars per day.
I make a motion that we amend the per dim amount for employees to travel from forty-five dollars a day to sixty-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion pass. Item number nine, discussion of possible acting to approve no camping ordinance for the City of Brookshire.
Mayor, Council, you have a draft ordinance in front of you. Really, I looked at the City of Houston's and then looked at some other towns along I-ten that have, I guess, similar problems probably that y'all are dealing with. And still what I thought was the simplest and easiest to enforce. If you have questions about the verbiage, I'll be happy to answer, but this is a already tried and true defensible ordinance. Hopefully, Chief, this will give the Police Department the teeth to at least have the conversation with the folks.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the no camping ordinance, two-five dash seven four one dash one six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Item number ten, discussion of possible acting to approve the use of the Make Brookshire Beautiful Fund to select a contractor to pick up trash at the Katy Freeway Corridor. Also asked for this particular item to be added to the agenda. You know, the Katy Freeway Corridor and also three fifty-nine is to, what I see is the front door of the city. And we need to, we need to make sure that it's, it's nice and neat and clean for any people that are visiting our city to help improve the image for the citizens, to also encourage businesses to come. So we need, I think, that it would be good to hire a contractor to keep the trash picked up along service roads on both sides of the freeway and from the welcome sign that's going toward Folscher and also all the way up to Highway ninety that the paper and trash and debris gets picked up there. We've already been working with Public Works to keep the grass cut on both sides of the freeway and also down ninety on both sides as well to make sure things are looking nice and neat and clean with people in our city.
I make a motion that we approve the use of the Make Brookshire Beautiful Fund to select a contractor to pick up the trash at the Katy Freeway Corridor, I-ten and FM three fifty, three fifty-nine.
Second. Gotcha.
Ms., Ms. Alderman.
McDade.
McDade. All right, motion pass. Item number eleven, discussion of possible acts to approve the youth advisory committee application. Alderman stamps.
Uh, Mayor, Council, you have the applications inside of your packets. Uh, we went ahead and revised those applications for the students. Applications actually already been passed out to multiple students. We'll have our interviews starting on next week.
It's a good program. Ms. Dunn, you have anything like that?
Um, yeah, so the application that you have in front of you, we kept it from the previous time that the Yak Committee was open. Only thing we changed on here was, we changed it from a essay to just a statement. And then previously, they required five hundred words, they just, the new board voted for two hundred and fifty words. That's literally the only change that we have. We do have currently, I don't know if I can talk about this, but we have six students that have turned in the application so far. Um, we did do some, handed out applications at different Um, we did, um, do some, um, handed out applications at different events. The pep rally, also we did the, uh, tailgating at the homecoming. So we are still accepting applications, the deadline is tomorrow. Um, it is online and you can also, um, reach out to us at City Hall.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if y'all have any students aged twelve to eighteen.
Yes.
It'll really look good on their college reference.
That's exactly what I've been stressing to the kids.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Just need a motion now.
Make a motion that we approve the youth advisory council application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Three more items to executive session. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action to approve a policy to manage excessive repetitive and brothersome, burdensome requests. Public comments, right?
Well, th- these are, uh, related to Public Information Act requests, so. If we have repetitive requests, then this puts in place a mechanism where they reach a certain number of hours, thirty-six hours in any given twelve-month period, then we can essentially say, okay, we're going to charge you for everything now. I, I, I assume that we don't charge for little, small little things, just the big requests. So it puts them in that category, also allows us to qualify whether or not, you know, if somebody requ- requests something anonymously, we can request some ID from them. If, if they don't provide that idea, we can't force the issue, but we can charge them for that and treat them almost like a frequent requester. So if y'all have any questions, uh, turn to Keith here or I can answer them. It is not.
So you're pretty much saying after so many requests, then the person will have to be charged or?
They can be charged from the beginning.
Oh, okay.
Correct. Once you reach that thirty-six hours, you get charged for everything.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
And, and, you know, is, this is not to, to stop people from asking for information from the city. We, we are trying to be as transparent as we, as we can. But you just don't know the number of requests that we get coming in. And some of them are from, you know, you know, just repetitive, repetitive, repetitive. And it, it takes a lot of staff time and I know they get paid to do it. But if you just only knew what was coming in and seeing what was coming in, it, sometime it just gets, you know. So now it's just time, if you really want it, then you may have to pay a little money.
Only if you reach that threshold.
Right, if you reach that threshold.
Otherwise you'll be treated just like, like everybody else is.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stick around for the next one.
So do we have to, um?
Yeah.
It would be, it's a motion to approve the ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number two-five-dash-seven-four-two-dash-one-six.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action to approve a junk vehicle ordinance.
Uh, Mayor Council, I, Mayor, I don't know if you saw my email about this item earlier this week or not, but essentially, I took two things at the last meeting. One was, we have adopted, I guess, informally, a policy of bringing every single time there's a junk vehicle to Council's attention, so you would bless it. So you wanted me to take a look at the ordinance, also make sure it's compliant with state law. So we looked at it two different ways. First was, does it comply with state law, and it does, as written. And two, do we need to amend it to eliminate that, that process? And the answer is no. Cause it's already, there's already a procedure built into the ordinance for staff to handle it. I'm not sure how it was blessed at some point for us to bring it back to you every time. But it, it's not necessary, in fact, I think staff, at least my impression from the action you took last time was, you have no desire for us to bring back every single time there's a junk vehicle, uh, in place, that y'all have to bless it. It kind of holds the process up as well as it's just unnecessary for you as legislators of the city to, to address that. So you've already put the ordinance in place for us to handle it, for the, uh, Police Chief to handle it through the municipal court if necessary, and we can take care of it. So, uh, I mean, the mayor is still the chief executive officer of the city, so if he, if it comes to any of y'all's attention, if there's an issue, bring it to Lakeithia or the mayor's attention, and then they can just let the chief know and we'll start the pro, the notice process. So unless y'all have an issue with the ordinance as written, I don't see any need to take additional action. We're ready to go with taking y'all out of the loop. I mean, it'll be part of a report, I assume, if we have to do that. But you won't, it won't be necessary for you to, uh, pre-approve every time we need to have one.
And this is another one of those, uh, such things where, you know, we're not trying to be tyrants with people to have vehicles in their yard. If you're gonna repair the vehicle, it's been there a little while, that's fine. But we see vehicles that have been sitting for two to three years.
Longer.
Two to three years or longer. And so we are encouraging the citizens that, you know, if you're not gonna do anything with those vehicles, please move them so we can beautify the city, make it look better, and that's what we're trying to do. So that's some of the reasoning behind getting this ordinance updated.
Mayor, I don't think there's any necessary action on this item.
No action. Thank you. Last item, discussion and possible action for authorization to hold public auction for surplus property. Dr. Batista.
Good evening again. We're coming to you with, uh, some equipment that's been sitting at Public Works and what's, uh, been, not been utilized. I do want to mention that you do have a sheet there, the auction item list, uh, FY twenty-six. We're gonna remove item number ten on there. Um, but we would do want to consider items one through nine. Items one through four are generators, but we do have, uh, two additional generators that we would be keeping for utilization.
Do the generators totally not work or just?
No, 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 the, these two diesel generators are, are, um, fleet manager mechanic mentioned that, that there's just a lot of maintenance that go on with the diesel ones compared to the gas. So we'll have a vendor come in and, if you all approve, we'll have a vendor come in and, um, put, you know, take their own pictures and then put them on auction for, for, on behalf of the city. So that'd be an actual vendor that the, that the city had used, has utilized before.
Okay.
All right, we have any discussion on that?
No discussion, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion for authorization to hold a public auction for surplus property.
Second. I'll let you get it this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Executive session. The City Council will meet in closed session pursuant to Title Five, Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code for the Purpose of Consulting with Legal Counsel, Section five-five-one oh seven-one. The Council will convene an executive session pursuant to Section five-five-one zero seven for the Texas Government Code to consider personnel issues and duties of police officers, public officers, employees, city secretary, police chief, public works director, municipal courts clerk, and the time is seven fifty-eight PM.
We'll see y'all after executive session.
I'm sure Joseph told you this, but on the.
The time is eight thirty-one PM. Discussion to consider action resulting from executive session. There's no action. Onto future gen items. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes, discuss and possible action to for a public hearing for the Bryant Stacy Group on twelve street, Development on twelve street.
You want a public hearing or a town hall meeting?
Well, I guess a town hall, town hall meeting.
The purpose being a public discussion between members of the public in your house.
Yes.
We'll do it as a town hall.
Uh-huh.
Ms. Glover, are you captioning?
Discussion and possible action for a town hall meeting.
To schedule a town hall meeting.
That it?
Yeah, that's it.
Alderman stamps.
Representative from Bega Chili to update us on the audits. And nothing against you, Ms. Lottie, but I would just like for them to come and therefore we could put a little pressure on them so they can get these audits up to date, up to, up to par.
I agree.
Yeah, we need to contact them. Ms. Lyons, make sure we contact them.
That it, sir?
That's it from me.
Alderwoman McDate.
Alrighty, I have four, acting like you.
Time now, heat up my shiv.
Okay.
Me this time.
Per, per executive session, discussion and possible action regarding personnel matters related to public work superintendent. Agenda item, discussion and possible action to request an update from our city attorney regarding the ongoing Waller County precinct four investigation involving former employees Jennifer Ward, Erica Malina, and Stacy Gutte. Next, a discussion update regarding former mayor pro temp Jeremiah Hill's additional case filed with Waller County Precinct Four in reference to misuse of city funds and falsifying election applications. Y'all getting that? Okay. Last one is discussion and possible action to hire an independent investigator regarding former, former council member Tony McNedley's possible involvement in the misuse of EDC funds related to the purchase of agriculture. Projects, and that's it.
That's it? Okay, I have two.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Is it raining outside?
Have to get on Ms. McDate now.
Hold on, what, what'd you say you had? Oh my God, uno dos.
Okay, discussion and possible action to approve and publish a request for qualifications for city attorney. RFQ, city attorney.
You don't have to do that, you can just do proposals unless you want to. We don't, we're not subject to the same procurement, uh, professional procurement act that engineers and all. You just want to go out for legal services, see what happens.
Go out for legal services.
Got it.
Second, presentation by records consultant. RAC Records Retention Management Services for shredding documents. And that's it. Ms. Dunn, do you have any community announcements? Officer Phillips?
Two Ms. Dunn.
Uh-oh.
They know why I'm up here.
You want to go first?
Come to the bed for some more.
Yeah, let me go first. First of all, thank y'all, the council chief. Thank you guys for allowing us to have a public treat, but I protested because we got cheated out of the way.
No, y'all lost.
The city won.
PD, PD Jax would say, get ready, get ready, get ready, come, come back next year, we're gonna win this thing. I just want to say, man, thank you for allowing us to have it, it was a, it was a success. It was a great turnout, thank you chief for allowing us to have the PD. Uh, just want to say we got some events coming up and also if you guys want to donate bicycles to us from police department for our tour drive, I know he just wants a moment of lottery. Wouldn't have to take that.
Doing a great job, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's done.
We need you to be just as joyous as him.
November eighth, this Saturday is the fourth annual Veterans Awareness Day, it's going to be at Royal High School from six PM to nine PM. Um, November the eighth, also the hangar's having their fresh food and veggies at ten AM, again at the hangar. November the eleventh, just FYI, City Hall will be closed for Veterans Day.
Okay.
November twenty-fourth, uh, there is a food pantry at the hangar at ten AM. November twenty-fifth is the tenth annual senior citizens Thanksgiving luncheon from ten AM to two PM, we'll be here at the convention center and the sponsor for that is Dr. Lee Nelson Jones.
When is it you say, what day? What day? The twenty-fourth?
November the twenty-fifth.
Oh, twenty-fifth?
Uh, December fourth, uh, Vargas Agency is having open house from four to six, their address is four one one nine South, uh, South Front Street. On December the sixth, we are having the City of Brookshire Christmas tree lighting and Christmas movie night. The movie of choice will be How the Grinch Stole Christmas.
Yes, citizens did vote. It wasn't me.
Six PM to eight AM will be in amphitheater. On December the twelfth, uh, Ms. Mia Davis is hosting a senior day at the hangar, it's going to be from nine AM to twelve PM. December thirteenth, we are the second part of our Christmas festival, it's going to be a parade starting at the police department. Um, please reach online if you would like to rent a prize, parade starts at twelve, we'll go straight up ninety and then at the amphitheater. Where the, it will be followed by a family fun day from one PM to eight PM. Again, everything we got at amphitheater.
Pass the beer, buddy.
December eighteenth is, uh,
My birthday?
Senior citizen party.
Birthday, my birthday.
Eight thirty to one thirty PM. Um, again, the Yak.
Excuse me, ma'am, hold on, let's go back to December eighteenth.
December eighteenth.
My birthday.
All right.
Wow.
Okay, and on December eighteenth is, uh,
Thank you!
Well, she'll be officially a senior citizen.
Um, tomorrow is the last day for the Yak application, just give, please give those turned in by four thirty PM. If anyone has any announcement, um,
Also the last home football game tomorrow.
Okay. The last home football game for Raw Falcons is tomorrow at seven.
Seven PM.
Seven PM.
The grand opening for the Waller County Courthouse is this Saturday.
Oh, is it?
Grand opening for Waller County Courthouse this Saturday.
How many's that?
Ten AM.
Ten AM, on this Saturday.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Uh, just to add to what she was saying, uh, the tour drive is before thirteen too.
Okay, great.
Ask everybody, come out for the tour drive, wait hours.
All right.
Ladies.
Thank you, thank y'all.
I requested that Officer Phillips bring over a box so that citizens could also leave donations for the Thanksgiving drive here.
Okay.
We would greatly appreciate that on tomorrow.
Thank you, thank y'all.
Thanks for all y'all do.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, your favorite part?
I make emotions when we adjourn.
Second, all in favor?